By the way, can't we do something wrong with our Christmas tree? That's fine. And everybody calls it the Charlie Brown Tree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the fourth at what time?
Tennis.
Okay, I'll let you know.
It's now six thirty. I'm gonna bring this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam, city clerk.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you for that. We're gonna have our flag salute. I'm gonna ask Mayor Protem Suarez to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and Pastor Eddie Vargas from Restoration Life Church will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand, face the flag, right hand of your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for every city official and every civil servant. Lord, we pray that you protect them and their families. And Father, we pray for our leadership here in the city of Lawndale. We pray that you give them wisdom, discernment, clarity of mind, clarity of heart, God, that they would walk in righteousness with you. And God, I pray for peace over our city, strength as a community. And Lord God, that you would bless our sheriff's department, our fire department, and every worker that's out on the streets, making our city a better city. And God, we thank you for that. You said that you're a God of peace, and so, Lord, we pray for peace in our city. And Lord, we ask you for all this, in Jesus's name. Amen. God bless all of you.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Eddie Vargas for always being a word of inspiration and bringing the word of God to us. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move our agenda along. Let's have our public safety report. We're gonna have Lieutenant Osborne from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department will give us a public safety update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council and members of the community. I am Ricky Osborne, Lieutenant of South LA Sheriff's Station, assigned to the city of Lawndale. And I'm here to present the public safety report for November 5th through November 18th. I will just begin by discussing our notable arrests and investigations. On November 6th, at approximately eighteen forty-five hours, Deputy Hernandez conducted a patrol check of the Smart &amp; Final store located at 15205 Hawthorne Boulevard. He contacted a male adult walking around the rear parking lot. He conducted a consensual search of the male and recovered a black bindle containing methamphetamine from his pocket. And the suspect was arrested for possession of narcotics. The suspect was not a Lawndale resident. On November 7th, at approximately fourteen twenty-four hours, Deputy Hernandez conducted a patrol check at the PPG Paint Store located at 164th Street in Hawthorne Boulevard. He contacted a male Hispanic adult loitering in the rear parking lot of the location. He conducted a consensual search of the male and located a baggie containing methamphetamines and a glass pipe used to ingest the drugs. The suspect was arrested for possession of narcotics and possession of paraphernalia. The suspect is a Lawndale resident. During the last two weeks, our traffic incidents regarding our traffic-related incidents, approximately thirteen citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red light, and speeding. And our next community engagement is this Wednesday, the twentieth, at 6:00 PM. It's the Neighborhood Watch Meeting at the Harold Hoffman Community Center, and everyone from the community is invited and occurs to attend. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, thank you for the report. Any questions on the captain's report? Lieutenant's report.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that when you come to the podium, if you would start with your name first at about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm Holly Osborne. I live across the street in Redonda Beach. And, you know, I go to a lot of meetings, and I pick up stuff. And one of the things, since we had the meeting in May where they decided about the green line route, there've been three new issues that have come up that we have not made talking points. So naturally, I have. And I've mailed one of you, but before I do that one, I'm gonna do the one about redlining, because Director Solis said if a city had been redlined in the past, back in like nineteen thirty-nine when they started this, they would give extra consideration in treating them if they were their disadvantaged community. So I had this speech, and I said, you know, one of your meetings, you said that redlining, if they were redlining, he would give them extra consideration. This was the redlining tool that I found. This is Lawndale. They are redder than red. And then what I did was, I held up something like this, and I plotted, I did it upside down. Okay, I plotted the two roots, and I said, if both of these affect Lawndale, shouldn't they have the say on which route they pick? Okay, they both are redlined, but Lawndale being the one that's most affected should have the say. So I did that at the P&amp;P meeting, that's the Planning and Programming, but you only, I only got four directors at that one. Okay, now, this is the one I'm gonna do right now. On October 8th, so that's really recently, Holly Mitchell Supervisor released a statement about, about community forest management and the importance of trees, shade, et cetera, for a healthy community. We've been talking about that for a year. But I just said, this is Holly Osborne, retired engineer. I came across a statement from October 8th that the county supervisor made about community forest management. Thank you supervisors for that statement. The statement also mentioned the inequities in green space and trees across LA County for different communities. You said this was not an accident, and that communities of color particularly suffered. And your statement said you were focusing on the unincorporated areas of LA County. I would like to bring up the city of Lawndale, a city that is greater than sixty percent Hispanic. Every statement you made about green space, or lack thereof, would apply to Lawndale, which is particularly park poor. And although Lawndale is now incorporated, it was one of the last South Bay cities to incorporate. You have heard numerous Lawndale citizens plead for their trees and shade that are along the right of way. I'm asking, not asking you to do something special for Lawndale in your new plans, but I am going to ask you to not do something to Lawndale that would make their own very limited urban forest worse. Please do not vote for the Row for the Green Line when it comes up for a decision. This is a forested trail, and it is priceless. Okay, now, I was gonna hold this up, and I will send you all this stuff, okay?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I can't believe it. Exactly right.
Yes, ma'am.
Surprise, surprise. I'm here for the train, too. Chelsea Schreiber, I live adjacent to the Row, and I would just like to add something that Holly said. A couple of years ago, our city actually had a, what would it be called? But there's a report that classified Lawndale as park poor and identified areas around the city where we should have parks, and one of those was the Row. So I think that's pretty important, and it's something that if we want to make a difference in our community, that would be a really wonderful way to start. So. My second question is, I have, I have two additional questions. One is, I realize that even if we don't have a stop through Lawndale with the train, we still have to pay a percentage of the cost of the build of the project that is within Lawndale. And even with Metro's flawed stats and flawed reports on the, how much it's gonna cost, I would like to figure out if we could, what our city will be paying for that, if it could potentially happen on both the Row and on Hawthorne Boulevard, and where that money would come from in our city. So what services would we have to cut? I'm not sure if I have this right, but I think our budget is twenty million dollars. And if they go at the low end of the, of the build on the Row, and we have to pay three percent, that's twenty million dollars. So where does that money come from? And if it's a project our city doesn't even want, why are we required to pay that kind of money for a service that doesn't even stop in Lawndale? And my third thing, or my second question is, a few months ago, there were some BNSF guys along the road that were pulling out old railroad ties, and they told me that the railroad ties that are there are over a hundred years old, and are, and at that time were sealed with tar, arsenic, and there's another, another chemical that they were, that they, that they're sealed with. And he, they didn't know about the plan at all. And he said, from what they know, and I have his name somewhere, a lot of, a lot of people are, businesses or companies that want to move railroad tracks don't move railroad tracks because of the mitigation needed. So I would like to know what's actually in the soil, and I would like to actually know what's in those railroad ties from our perspective, instead of having Metro do that. So either get some funds from our community or from the city to test for arsenic and other chemicals. The reason I want to do it personally with, with our city is because the BNSF guys, I said, when they were talking, I said, isn't that something that Metro would do? And he laughed, and he said, don't trust Metro. So, I mean, we all know that. So I'm just trying to figure out if we can set aside some funds to potentially test the soil and see on our own terms what's there. And if the BNSF guy is right, he said, if the soil's disturbed, a lot of those places are classified as superfund sites. So we don't want that in Lawndale. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dina, Lawndale resident.
Hello.
I just want to thank you for putting on the Field of Honor, especially you, Kearney, that you did a little quick video about it and everything. And I guess the young students, I don't know if, remember, we used to call it junior high. I know they call it middle school now. But anyway, I thought it was very nice of the kids to obviously come out and take a good look at stuff. I pick up my flag tomorrow. I did it in honor of my father. And this is always so nice to look at. And I've come at night, I know daytime flag is, you always see that, but it's so pretty at night, just to come over here and took some pictures and everything. So thank you again. I don't think any other South Bay cities that I know of do that. This is very, very nice every year. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this body, may do so at this time.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Renee Grote Torres, and I am a longtime resident of Lawndale. I've resided in this city since nineteen sixty-seven. That being said, I would like to share my thoughts with the city councils with regards to the desire to put more hotels here in the city of Lawndale. That was one of the cards that was passed out during the election. After speaking with some of our residents, I think some of the problem in Lawndale is the residents are uninformed with regards to consequences that could arise when new establishments like these hotels come into the city. After all, our city does not have a lot to offer as far as tourism. My concern is that these hotels would become places for people who must live off of vouchers and create transient problems. Now, I know that we have the sheriff's department, they come up, they give us what's happening in the city, but the last time, I felt like it was a little glossed over. I can tell you that in my quadrant, there are two hotels. And now, we have the WSS store, as well as Smart &amp; Final, and now, we have Sprouts. I do participate in the Citizens App, which is free, but they do have a membership if you want more detailed information, to share with you what's going on in the city. And I can tell you, it doesn't seem very optimistic, because based on the last report card I received, or I was notified with on the Citizen App, it stated that two days ago, as recent as two days ago, crime has gone up in our city thirty percent from August to November. So I'm really concerned because I know, I hear the helicopters at night, I know, I see the activity that's going on, and I don't know that a hotel is really the best thing for the city. Who is going to oversee this, make sure crime doesn't get out of control, make sure seedy things aren't going over there? And I would like to share that just even as recent as the twelfth, there was something that came on the Citizen App that said there was a break-in. I think it was at the day's end. So I really strongly urge you to reconsider putting up another hotel, maybe think about senior housing for some of our seniors that are gonna be retiring, that are gonna be on a fixed income. That might benefit them better. And then I'd also like to know what the name of the hotels are that you're considering having to come here to Lawndale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll close public comments and bring it to the diocese for any comments by the council, if any. Let's hear from Cuevas. Ms. Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. A special thank to Dr. Osborne for always fighting for our small city of Lawndale. And I can't wait to see your last spreadsheet with, that you couldn't present to us. But thank you for being on top of us and representing us, even though you don't live in Lawndale. That will be all.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you to everyone that came out to speak with us tonight and to voice what's on your minds. Dr. Osborne, always enjoy the information that you provide us with. And I'm looking forward also to that last one that you haven't been able to provide us with. Good information. Mr. Moore, is there any way you could respond to Chelsea and about railroad ties and where the money would come from if Lawndale were to have to pay?
Good evening, mayor, council. I'll try to do my best to answer some of the questions. With regards to the Measure M, there's a ratio requirement. I'd have to double-check city attorney's office and finance and get back to the council, but there's a percentage depending on how much that the city has to pay towards the project, whether we have a stop or not. But I need to check into that with Metro under the Measure M ratio. So whatever portion of that project comes through Lawndale, there's a portion we need, we may be responsible for, but I need to verify on that. With, with concerns to getting on the property, we'd have to get permission from Metro to do any testing on their property. The railroad ties and all that, we'd have to check with them. There'll be what we call Phase One or Phase Two process. We'd have to look into that if that's the desire of the council, bring that item back. And then with regards to arsenic on railroad ties, we can, you know, I don't know, we'd have to test those and get permission from Burlington Northern, as well as from Metro to go on the lines and see if they'd allow testing and whatnot.
Thank you. And Dina, I love Field of Honor, and I find myself mostly coming up at night, too, because there's just something, it's peaceful, it's quiet, you can walk among the flags, and it's just very special. So I enjoy it to it. And I find myself up here several times while they're there. As far as the names of the hotel for Renee, I'm not sure we have the names of the hotels, do we?
No.
Good evening, mayor and council. We do not have the names. The, both applicants, one's been approved through planning commission. They're looking at a Marriott-type, home-to-you type product, which is Marriott, could be choice. And then the other one, it's not determined, but I did hear from the other property owner of the hotel that's been approved, he heard that they were looking at a Marriott or Hilton-type brands. So these are name brands. That's what they were looking at. But the one on Hawthorne and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, that hotel has not been fully approved by the commission or the council. So that still needs to go through entitlements.
I hope that answered your question. You're very welcome. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I just want to thank you, all the ladies came out to speak tonight. And I just responded, Dina, the Field of Honor is the greatest thing in the world. I only speak, I do interviews three times a year. That's Memorial Day, Field of Honor, and Angel Tree. So this Field of Honor means a lot to me. I have a lot of friends on the wall that have just go away, I no longer here. Besides that, that's all I have, Robert, and I...
Okay, madam. Okay, Protem Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. I did have one follow-up question for staff regarding the question about soil samples, because that is a huge concern for me personally, to the environmental impacts that can have on your health. And so, my question would be, do we have a ballpark? Do we know how much that would cost? Or is that something we could look into?
Mayor, council, we can definitely look into it. Rough estimate on Phase One could be fifteen to twenty thousand. We'd have to look into it, do an RFP. But just depends on how much soil sampling, because that's one mile. Probably, if the Metro allowed us, we could want to test the whole segment of the railway. And so, it just depends on that, just on the soil. They usually do three or four soil testing. So roughly, now, if there's a Phase Two, if there's arsenic and whatever, or other issues going on in the soil, such as, I'm not saying this is happening, but there are pipelines through there. So there probably could be some potential other things that have leaked into the soil, but we wouldn't know that till we tested the soil if that has happened. I know in the SEQA document that Metro has presented to us, there was some kind of Phase One testing done. Definitely, if the city and the council, and the mayor and the council are wanting to look into that, we can, we can look into that, and then also bring that back for consideration to the council.
And then I had one other question. Does the Metro Subcommittee group still meet? That, that was ended? Okay. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. So staying on the issue of the soil samples, so the SEQA document, as you mentioned, Mr. City Manager, should reveal the soil sampling, which is, of course, is a part of the environmental analysis on process. And of course, you know, we want to do our due diligence to make sure that we double-check, even with our own folks, their samples or what have you. So I do get that, and I do agree with such. That's why one of the issues that we are, of course, very much interested in is the, the environmental impacts of this project. And so, we are definitely looking at SEQA. And as we said all along, that not only the California Environmental Review Process, but also the federal government, which has another review process, that we want to ensure that those processes are undertaken as well, if there's federal money that triggers those analyses to be taken. And certainly, the environmental quality of the soil is definitely one of those criteria. And yes, and if we feel that, that we're looking at the analysis, our folks looking at the analysis, that we need to double-check those analyses or what have you, to get our own independent, you know, opinion of those soil samples, and even other environmental qualities issues as well, we definitely would do so. I definitely support that. So I want to thank you for bringing that out, because that's something we definitely is looking out for and have on, on our radar, not just the soil, but any environmental. Because we know there's, there's a lot of stuff that we may not know, that we don't know, until they actually go into the soil and they find what's beneath the surface, besides what we suspect that we know in terms of the oil, petroleum, et cetera. But definitely, the soil samples is something that we'd be interested in, too. And also, the water quality, if these soil or contaminants have penetrated the water on table, what have you, and what's the water quality of what have you. So we'll be looking into that as well. Going back to, we're staying on Measure M. So Measure M usually requires a three percent local return for projects such as the Sea Line. And I know, early on years ago, we were having discussions about if there was gonna be a platform in the city. And in that case, yes, we would pay a three percent local return. When we say we would pay a three percent, basically, that means they would retain monies equivalent to three percent that would normally go through the city of Lawndale, go to the city of Lawndale. So it's not like we would write a check to them out of our budget or any other fund. It's simply that they will withhold a certain amount that usually go to the city for local improvements or local transportation needs or what have you, and that's that three percent satisfied. Now, I was under the impression that the three percent satisfied was applied if there was a station in your community. And that three percent was there for, basically for the, the construction and maintenance of that station or what have you. So I would be very surprised, and we will check. So I would be very surprised, and we will check to see if we still would be obligated to pay that three percent. But if we are obligated to pay the three percent, I'm of the view that we won't write a check, like once again, from out of our account, but they would simply hold the three percent, you know, from us. So, but we will confirm that. The Fields of Honors. Deana, thank you for bringing that up, because that's, we came up with that, what was it, our ninth time doing it, I think? Our ninth time Field of Honor? And yes, it looks very beautiful and stunning at nighttime or what have you. And the community has gone to really embrace it, and more people come out, you know, over the few days that the display is open to the public to kind of reflect on their loved ones who have served this great nation. And we appreciate the community that comes out as well to not only to have their loved ones on, you know, represented on each flag or what have you, but just come to enjoy either the flags and enjoy the memories of our servicemen and women. So I want to thank the staff for putting that together every year and for looking out visually to make sure no one's, you know, doing any, you know, misbehavior or what have you, because it's there for like three days or what have you. So I want to thank everyone for that. And thank you for bringing that up. And with that, I will end my comments on public comments. And we will move our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. What is the pleasure of the Consent Calendar? Item two through four.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Quavis and a second by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN with the... Madam City Clerk, please conduct the vote. Thank you.
For the Consent Calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next item on the agenda under Administration, item five, the General Municipal Election Unofficial Result Reports. Let's have the report. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. This report is to provide you with an update on the unofficial general municipal election results. On November 5th, 2024, the city conducted its general municipal election for the offices of Mayor, one seat, and City Council Member, two seats. As of November 13th, 2024, the unofficial results are as follows. For Mayor, there were three candidates, Wanza Tolliver, Robert Pullen Miles, and Bernadette Lourdes Suarez. Wanza Tolliver received 675 votes, or eight percent. Robert Pullen Miles received 5,057 votes, or 59 percent. Bernadette Lourdes Suarez received 2,701 votes, or 32 percent. For City Council Member, there were three candidates, Francisco M. Talavera, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, and Shirley Cuevas. Francisco M. Talavera received 3,594 votes, or 33 percent. Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman received 3,472 votes, or 32 percent. Shirley Cuevas received 3,759 votes, or 34 percent. The total number of ballots cast is 6,231. On December 5th, the LA County Clerk's office is scheduled to certify the election results and declare the election officially conducted. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. There any comments on the report? Let's hear from Ms. Suarez.
No comments, but I just want to thank you, and I want to congratulate our mayor on his reelection. And I really want to congratulate all of the candidates, because it's not easy running for office. So, you know, I just want to congratulate those that won and those who have served. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the report? Okay. Thank you for that report. Let's move ahead to our next agenda item is item six, award of a construction service with Mariposa Landscaping.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. The irrigation systems at Roger Anderson Park, Jane Adams Park, and Williams Green Park are old and frequently break. Therefore, they are in need of redoing the irrigation systems. Staff prepared a request for proposals for the project, and it was advertised in August of this year. On October 16, 2024, the city clerk opened the bids, following all the bidding procedures. Four bids were received. They range in price from $573,449 up to $869,898. A team of staff members reviewed all the proposals according to the RFP criteria. And staff determined that the proposal from Mariposa Landscapes located in Windell, California, is the most complete, responsible, and responsive proposal for a cost of $997,000. Because Mariposa wasn't the low bid, staff also reviewed the San Diego landscape, land systems proposal, but found them to be not responsive because it wasn't complete. And also, they just don't have experience with public agencies. And it's definitely a requirement. Construction is expected to begin within the next two months, and it may last up to four months, depending on weather and other things. The main issue with the length of the project is that school is in session, and there's after-school programs. So we need to phase all the construction through them. Fiscal impact is there's enough funds to, for the price of the project, and it comes from the American Rescue Plan Act. Staff recommends awarding the construction services to Mariposa Landscape for $997,716. And that's all my report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any, let me see how to fast-forward this. I don't know if this was from before or not, because I'm still on five. How do I win? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Would you have your hands up? Okay. Ms. Quavis. I wasn't sure if that was from this.
My question is regarding the ranking. How do you come up with who, which staff members review it? And how does a ranking work? Is it based on a, what kind of scale is it?
Thank you for that question. Yes, the team that reviewed the proposals consists of staff members from different departments. There was somebody from Community Services and two from our department. Three from our department, I should say. The categories are based on the, what we put down on the RFP, and they consist of... Did they attend the site visit, for example, to be familiar with the scope of work? The completeness of the RFP response? Did they really read everything and take it seriously? The experience we propose equipment, in this case, meaning are they really a landscaping company? Do they know what they're doing? Knowledge and expertise of the company, which it, in a way, is its experience as well. And most importantly, is prior relevant experience. And this is extremely important because they have to know a public agency. It's very different than working for a public, private, I meant to say. Quite a difference between public and private projects. And of course, the total project cost also comes into the selection process. Each of these items had a 10-point maximum. And therefore, you add the points at the end and come up with an answer. Mariposa Landscape has 69.7 points. The second one has 62 points. That was Island Empire. Bennett Enterprises had 55. And San Diego, the low bidder, had only 51 points.
Okay, my question, you made a comment that the company has to have prior work experience with public agencies. Is that a Longdale-specific requirement? Or is it just in general, all cities require that?
Thank you for that question. It is all cities' requirements. That's not the city of Longdale. Every, in the experience, it's always measured on dealing with public agencies. Every place I've been at, it's a standard measure.
Okay, I guess I was just curious as to why they would even apply if that was something that would disqualify them. But I don't know. I guess that was my question, is why even apply?
It never fails that people do apply. I think price has to do with that as well. But I don't know why they apply, but they always do.
I was just curious if that was just a standard or was it an actual requirement? So that was just my confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. So you answered two of the questions, and they were centered around the requirements, the one that you just answered previously. So I'll skip those. It may also show that, you said that they didn't have municipal experience, experience working with governments. And that might be why, and I was going to ask this, why the numbers are so drastically different from 5,000 to 7,000 versus the other two that's higher than than the winner. There is 8,026 versus 869, Mariposa. In that difference, I was going to wonder why such a drastic difference or what have you? Because usually you go with the lowest bidder, but it's the lowest responsible bidder, not simply the lowest bidder. So maybe that would explain if they don't have the experience. Had they had the experience, perhaps their bid probably would be higher. Or maybe they've bid lower because they don't have the experience and hoping that that will catapult them into the awarding position. I'm not really sure.
In my opinion, that is what happens. And I've seen it before where you have the difference in costs for many reasons. There are different requirements when you work for a project at a city. And when you haven't done it before, maybe you're not aware of all those differences.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure for clarification for the public's sake, if we do award this contract and someone's reviewing it and say, well, why didn't you go with, you know, 573 versus 97, which on the surface seemed like the one you would go with, you know, if you just simply, you know, balancing out your books or what have you. But I just wanted to get that explanation out there so people can kind of have the benefit of knowing why the lower bid is selected versus, I mean, a bid that is higher than the lowest.
And if it may help a little bit, a different agency, however, five of the bidders on a project ended up not being selected for the same issues, and then we got to a number six in there. So it happens, it's common that this happens.
Okay, very good. Okay, seeing no more questions on this item.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to add one more.
You mean to do something?
Mayor and Council, just want to add one. This is part of the agreement that we, the City Attorney's Office worked with Longdale Elementary School District on that last segment of our agreement of the improvements on the property. So that we had to work towards that end. And this is ARPA money. So just a heads up, we have to have it encumbered by December, end of December.
Absolutely. Thank you for the clarification. Did you want to add something? Okay. Anyone like to speak on this item and do so at this time?
Hey, sorry, I'm back again. I was actually going to send an email today. The, along the row, most of the sprinkler heads are broken off. And last night, they ran from about midnight to 8:30 in the morning. And there's a whole, like, along the row in the gutter area is just...
Let me ask you, is that pertaining to this particular project?
No, but just if we could, like, add that.
We'll make a note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item? If there's no more discussion?
I'll motion to approve. Staff recommendation.
So it's been motioned...
I'll second it.
Motion by Quavis that we approve staff recommendation and seconded by Suarez that we do so. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam City Clerk, would you conduct the vote, please?
For item number six, the motion passes with Councilmember Kearney and Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman voting no.
Number seven on the agenda is an update for the City Council on Animal Control Contracts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you was an update on our animal contract with the SPCA. As this council recalls, three months ago, I came before you and asked for additional funds for our contract with SPCA for our animal kenneling services. At that time, I advised the council that they had increased our fees significantly, up to approximately 40 percent. And this was a 100% increase over what we were paying just a few years ago. At that time, the mayor asked us if we could do regular updates on SPCA and advise how we are doing. Our service levels with SPCA remain constant. We are taking about 55 animals per month to them. They are charging us $300 per, our one-time fee for any and takes over 55 animals. Additionally, every city in the South Bay currently uses one of three agencies, either Lovejoy Animal Shelter, SPCA, or LA County Animal Care Services. We regularly are in contact with LA Animal Care Services, but at this time, they don't have any openings. Although they have put us at the top of their queue list for openings when they arrive. Lovejoy is too small an entity and isn't taking on anyone else. Staff is reaching out to agencies further away, including Downey, Long Beach, and City of LA. But at this time, there's no entities that are available to take on new customers. So at this time, we are continuing with SPCA. And that concludes my report, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Ms. Suarez.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, a few months ago, when we looked at the contract, we were told that they were the most competitive. And I don't know, maybe I might be mixing it up with they were the only ones available. I am interested in seeing, before we make, try to make a move, how much the other agencies are, how much they cost? And if it's competitive with what we're paying currently? I just want to keep that at the top of mind.
Of course, I can present to the council regular updates every couple of months. I do have another staff report addressing SPCA, and I can explain some of the costs in that staff report. I think the Mayor Protem might be confusing that meeting with one from a year ago. A year ago, they were the best deal compared to LA County. They were still cheaper. And one of the things that benefits us with SPCA is that because we've had such a longstanding contract with them, they do give us full access to their building. So we have the codes to their building to turn off the alarms. We have keys to their building and their gates. So even when they're closed, our officers have access so we can deposit animals very quickly and conveniently. And the process is very, is very quick. So that is an advantage that other agencies don't have. Having worked with the county and other positions I've been in, it is a much longer intake process. Our officers are required to stay with their officers throughout the process of checking the animals in. Plus, the county is so big, your officers are often waiting in line behind other cities' officers to get animals checked in. So it can be a lengthier process. And for that reason, a year ago, it was a better offer. This year, we didn't get any offers from any of the other agencies. No quotes were given because nobody was taking on any customers. So if, I couldn't say if it's the best deal right now, but it's the only deal. So that's why we're with them. We are looking for other entities and agencies to possibly take us on.
So, and, well, I'm only asking about the cost because I know we're looking, but I guess our... But I guess are we looking because they're raising the fees or we're looking?
We are looking because the fees are so high.
And what are we basing that off of? Are we looking at other agents or other, for example, the county? How much are they charging? Do we have those fees?
We do not because no.
So then how do we know?
Well, it doesn't matter if we know or not. They're not taking us on. If it was $1 or $1 million, they're not taking us. So no quotes were given by any agencies because no agency was willing to take us on. However, the SPCA's charges are so high now that it doesn't seem like it's the best deal for us anymore. So it may be, and then we can continue to research it. But again, right now, these fees seem very exorbitant. And as I said in my second staff report, I do have some of the things to address specifically about this. But I don't know that they acted in the best faith with us in negotiating as well. So that's another reason.
We'll get to that one later. But I was just curious if we had an actual comparison, but it sounds like we don't. But, I mean, I'm always for looking at the best cost options, but I just want to know what we're comparing it to.
Of cour- and if I could use last year's quotes for the county, it was around $9,000, $10,000 a month. If that holds still, I don't know. That was a quote from last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman-Gorman?
Can I just ask one question, Michael? You said that there are times when we can let ourselves into the building and so on and so forth. How many times during our work week are they not open and we have to utilize that?
So SPCA is only open six days a week. So we have seven-day-a-week officers. So at least, you know, on a Sunday when they're closed, we still go in there.
And are they open about our same business hours?
They're not. They're not. They're short, they're more banker hours. So they close, I believe, at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock.
So there's many times when we're having to go up and.
Not necessarily many, but there's, it's often enough, probably at least once or twice a week. Like I said, we were averaging about 50 to 60 intakes a month. But that's not, not every intake is a live animal. And we do bring them deceased animals, which we just put in the freezer. It's a very simple process. But because we have that ability to do that, it does make it for a quicker turnaround time for officers.
If we didn't have that, would we have to end up storing that deceased animal until, like, the next day or something?
We had looked into the option of taking on our own deceased. We could buy a freezer, keep it in the city somewhere, and we would store dead animals. I've done that in other places I've worked where you hire just a company to come and basically incinerates the animals. It's not a pleasant process. But it would be cheaper. We would save a little bit of money, but not a significant amount. It was just a couple hundred dollars a month, really.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I want to thank you for clarifying the costs as well as the pro tem was asking about the comparative costs from other agencies. And at first, I wasn't hearing the answer, but towards the end, you did mention that compared to, I guess, last year, which was the 9,000 or what have you. Because that was going to be, my question is, well, why can't we contact other cities that's currently on the contract to see how much they're paying for the services, even though we know they're not intaking any more, you know, animals? So therefore, there's no opportunities to contract with them. I do understand that. But we do want to make sure we get the, you know, get the best price. And I see that this is definitely, if you compare it to last year, is definitely, you know, a better price. Now, of course, I can't compare it to what other cities are currently paying because, one, we don't know that. And two, it would be a mute point, but it would be good to know, at least what they're paying, even though it is a mute point because they're full with the capacity or what have you, not taking on any more animals. But if we can get that just so the record, so we can kind of know moving forward. So when, I'd say for instance, if LA County do open up, right? And they have a certain price, of course, we'll know if that's a good price compared to other cities or what have you already on hand. But the way it is now, we're pretty much, you know, a captive, you know, client. So, you know, so we're not in the position to do our own, you know, not agency, you know, retain deceased animals. Yes, ma'am?
Just one more question, Michael. Do you think that the fact that we, nobody's coming open for bid, that we can look around? Does it have to do with the amount of abandoned animals that the South Bay has? Now is experiencing.
So there was.
COVID is over with. People, all during COVID, went out and got animals.
Right. And then we, there was an increase of adoptions in 2020.
And now we're having abandonment?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that is part of it. But again, comparatively, just our own numbers, you know, we've, as I'll state in my next staff report, we have seen an increase of what we've taken, but it's a very small percentage of how much more we've done as opposed to a few years ago. Nothing near 100%. So for those reasons, the cost is very prohibitive. But again, there's only a limited number of agencies that do this service.
Okay. With that, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Michael. I was, I just remember on your report, you put that we got charged $1,000 for a pig?
Yes.
Did we charge the homeowner for that? Or does it come out completely from the city?
So in my time here, we've never had a pig before. This was a stray pig. It was just wandering and condened, I believe. And our guys picked it up and, you know, we don't register.
It wasn't picked up from a home?
No, no, no. It was just walking down the street, and somebody called us, so we had to go get it. And again, $1,000 was, to me, egregious. But because we have a clause in the contract for wildlife charges, but pigs are not wildlife. They're domestic animals. And so there's been a number of charges in the new contract that didn't exist before. And for that reason also, we are kind of exploring other avenues.
So if we were to find the owner of that pet or that animal, would we be able to charge the homeowner or the?
We reverse charge often for things when we find out after the fact. So we could conceivably, but since we don't register anything, any animals except dogs, it would be hard to track it to that person. They'd have to come forth and actually let us know it was theirs. And then we could, we could put that on them. But my understanding is no one ever came looking for it. They donated it to a rescue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this report? We can receive and file without any objection? Okay. So that would be the order that we were receiving, filing this report? Thank you for the report. Let's move to item eight, regarding traffic calming on 147th Street.
There we go. Good evening again. The city received a concern from a resident regarding vehicles speeding on 147th Street between Hawthorne and Prairie Avenue. I couldn't find the date of the request, but it dates back to early 2023. The concern was reviewed by our traffic committee. And the decision was to move forward and prepare a traffic study to address all the concerns. Staff contracted with our on-call traffic engineer, Van Tech, and they prepared the report. The report was received also in 2023. The report talks about the findings. It shows that 2.3% of the vehicles traveling that section of 147th Street, only 2.3 were speeding. And more importantly, on, between Large and Prairie, less than 1% of the vehicles were speeding. At the time the report was being prepared, there was a capital improvement project going on at the city, the 2023, 2024 annual striping project. Based on recommendations of the traffic engineer. At the time, we proceeded to paint some continental crosswalks on that street. Continental crosswalks are crosswalks that are on the four legs of the streets there. So they are very highly visual. The crosswalks ended up working out, and no more reports of speeding happened there. City also received a concern from residents regarding vehicles speeding on 147th Street between Inglewood and Gravilla. Staff asked for a proposal from our traffic engineers. And the proposal for that is $23,156. At the time also that we were obtaining this report, there was a paving going on, another annual paving project on 147th Street. At the time, all the striping was going to be new. And in addition, we added two more continental crosswalks where needed. No more concerns or reports of speeding cars happened there. Therefore, the recommendation really is to not prepare another report for $23,000 if the issue is resolved. However, staff recommends that city council receive and file the traffic study report for the first portion of 147th Street and also provide further direction to staff if you think we need to prepare the other report. And that concludes my report. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say for the benefit of the public and for anyone watching at home, Councilmember Quavis asked me if she should recuse herself. She does live within 300 feet of 147th Street between Inglewood and Gravilla. And so because of that residential property concern, she has recused herself. She's sitting in the audience. So if people at home are watching, that's why she's walked off the dais for now. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that report. Any questions on this report? Any questions? I do have, I have one question. Just so I'm perfectly clear. Are we saying on both the sections of 147th that it is, has been determined that the improvements made has basically abated the necessity for additional traffic calming? And we don't see the kind that we were seeing reported or seeing prior to?
The portion from Prairie to Hawthorne, the report was completed and only found 3% of the cars speeding.
Right.
And once we striped, the comments, we received actually comment from the public saying, hey, those are great improvements. Thank you very much. On the other portion between Inglewood to Gravilla, the, since we were paving and restriped, we added some more crosswalks. The report hasn't been done, but we also received comments that it seems to have, to not be an issue anymore. I personally went to the site. I'm not an expert in traffic, but I did notice at least the times I go speeding cars, it could be as low as the same percentage, 3%, 1%. But the report wasn't done. However, the recommendations of the report is striping as one of the options. Therefore, I think it resolves. It's the easiest way to try to calm vehicular traffic.
Okay. Okay. I would say that I'm okay with trying it, especially if I'm hearing that what we've done so far has resulted in, well, resulted in people not seeing that the problem is persisting. It sound like that it's kind of, has reduced. And that's what we're trying to achieve. We're not necessarily trying to achieve put traffic humps or traffic cushions just for the heck of doing it. But if there's a need to, and if we can, of course, slow down traffic or whatever, get the traffic to, you know, to stop appropriately without, then I think that would be more advantageous in doing so because it would have, you know, met our objective. And so that's what, it sound like I'm hearing that the objective is being reached. That, so I don't know if there's a need to it. Obviously, we can visit it, you know, later if something happens where it no longer holds true. And we need a traffic study to tell us what type of traffic calming mechanism that needs to be in place besides what's already there, besides what we're going to implement. I don't have any problem with that.
You see and file it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I thought I hear from Hoffman-Gorman, like she had a question.
No, there is no question. I, I think that we've shown some improvement. And until we start hearing from the residents of the area again, I think that it should be put to rest at this point unless things start going ridiculous again. And if it goes ridiculous again, then address it again, maybe next spring. When people get active again on bicycles and walking and things like that. And when we hear from the residents along 147th that it's not going smoothly, then do it.
I can, I can do that. Any other discussion on this item? Okay. CNN, this is a receiving file. Let me see, do we need a motion for this one? Receive and file traffic study. Well, there is a receiving and file the traffic study report provided. So we might need a motion for that one. Mr. City Attorney? We good? We can receive and file that one? Okay. We can receive and file this with anonymous consent unless there's any objection? We'll do so at this time. So we will receive and file that report. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item nine. City council confirmation of a planning commission interpretation of land use determination.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Item nine is case number 2423. It is a planning case number. It's requesting the city council's confirmation of the planning commission's interpretation of a land use determination. We, the department received a request to classify dog grooming business as a first permitted right within the commercial manufacturing. What that means is that dog grooming would be allowed in the CM zone and anything that is more, that allows more intensive use, such as manufacturing. But it wouldn't be allowed in a more restrictive use, such as C3, C1, or any residential. So the zoning code lists what's permitted, what's conditionally permitted, and what's prohibited. Right now, dog grooming business isn't listed in our zoning code. So it becomes applicable when there's vagueness and, I guess, admissions of a use within the code. We go to the planning commission for clarification. So that's the land use determination. So the property owner owns a, about 2,000-square-foot property within the commercial manufacturing zone. And they filed an application for an interpretation. After a public hearing, the commission did vote to, by 302, to allow dog grooming within the commercial manufacturing zone. They also accepted staff recommendations to define dog grooming and a list of restrictions, such as no use of kennels, no overnight boarding of dogs. It's not a animal daycare. A dog grooming is defined as someone who would drop off their pets and they would get, you know, a wash, haircuts, and those type of services, but it's not animal services. And the requirement is also that all business activities remain indoors. And the requirement is also that all business activities remain indoors. So after a public hearing, the commission approved it, and under our municipal code, it's the responsibility of the council to affirm their interpretation. The staff request that the council consider the resolution before you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's hear from Ms. Juarez.
Yeah, I had a quick question regarding the two, so there were three that voted in favor, and then there were two others that did not. What were their concerns, or did they state during the meeting? I'm just curious.
The two meant that they were absent, so we only had a quorum of three. So zero voted, none, or didn't vote no, and the two was absent. But, you know, the applicant was there to present her case and what she plans on doing for the property, and the commission had a little bit dialogue, but they didn't have any concerns based on the staff report and based on testimony that staff provided.
And were there any public comments?
There was one, and she was the applicant, and that was it.
Yeah, I was a little confused by those numbers as well, but let me ask you the, just to reverse, what was the rationale for those who voted in favor of this interpretation?
So, I did discuss it at the public hearing. Right now, our zoning code identifies a vet, veterinarian, where you go in and have surgeries, neutering, or, you know, spades, and minor vaccinations and things like that. Right now, that's permitted within a C1 zone, which means that it's allowed in the C1, the C2, C3. So it's a more restrictive zone. So by classifying it in the CM zone, it's actually similar in use, but it's also less intensive. So that was some of the presentation and information that we presented to the commission in that our code right now, if you are a vet, you would be allowed in a less, or technically it's considered more restrictive zone, which is C1.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any discussion, more discussion on this item? If not, I will entertain a.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second it.
So it's been motioned by Cuevas that we approve the staff recommendation, and who seconded that for me?
That was me.
You seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, and Juarez has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam, City Clerk, will you conduct the roll call, please? Vote, please?
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item 10, seems like we have this item pretty often. Approved to dispose of one vehicle from the Community Development Department. It's like, it's like, here we go again, okay.
Actually, good evening. It's actually my item. So item number 10 is a request for council's consideration to dispose of one vehicle for the Community Development Department. So the department has a 2007 Ford Escape, which is about 17 years old, that has, that is currently past its usable service life. So pursuant to the Landale Municipal Code, the procedure to dispose of city property is to get three bids or through an auction. So staff looked at into the auction, and we contracted with Ken Porter Auction in Carson, and they would sell or auction the vehicle on behalf of the city. And so if the council approves the disposal of the vehicle, it would be in compliance with the Landale Municipal Code, so staff asked the staff, the council, consider this item.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is this a new company that we're using, or is that the same as the one we used in the
The name sounds familiar, which is the one that Finances uses.
Okay.
So it is the same company, I understand.
And is there a percentage that we pay them for the disposal or for the auction?
That I don't know.
Mayor, Council, there's administrative fee for the selling. It's with the previous vehicle sales, they charge, I believe it's like a 10% or less than that. We can get that information, but there is a fee for selling it off for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the next time we sell a vehicle, the report will not say the city will receive 100% of the proceeds.
Correct.
That's correct, Mayor, Council. We'll update that, make sure it's clear.
I understand your question. All right, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Like, pet Kearney, the staff recommendation, and seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam City Clerk.
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 11, request for approval for additional fees for outgoing animal control. I guess that's different. Okay, let's hear 11.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report we have before you is a recommendation, or, excuse me, the request for approval of additional fees for the outgoing animal control contract with SPCA for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. As I said earlier, the new contract with SPCA was approved by this council beginning on September 1st, 2024, for a new amount of $13,400, which was higher than our previous contract of $97,000, or $9,720 a month. However, as early as May of this year, SPCA notified staff of their intent to raise the fees with the new contract, and within weeks of letting us know, they began to raise the fees on the existing contract. So in violation of that contract, they made, they started billing us at $13,400 in the final four months of our old contract. I brought this up to city manager and city attorney's attention, and we collectively agreed we were only gonna pay the agreed upon amount of $9720 per month until that contract ended. However, SPCA made it clear to us that they were gonna drop us as a customer if we didn't pay the additional months of the final four, of the final four months of the 2023-2024 fiscal contract. So we, those four months, the difference between the, what we were paying them of $9720 and the $13,400 that they were expecting came out to $14,720. They were willing to waive late fees, even though the old contract had no mention of late fees, but so they took those charges off because it was originally closer to $20,000, excuse me, but the $14,720 is to cover the difference for May, June, July, and August 2024 of $3,680 per month. That concludes my staff report, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Let's hear from Ms. Juarez.
Yeah, you said that they charged fees on the, or SPCA charged fees on the old contract in violation of the contract. When I took a look at that contract, it said that they had, there was certain paragraph that said that they had the right to evaluate the charges and then charge beginning the next month. So what exactly is it, did they violate in the contract?
Well, there is that clause in the contract. However, one of the justifications they said for raising the fees was that the intake numbers had gone up. Whenever an animal is taken to SPCA, our officers do a triplicate form, or we get a copy, they get a copy, so we know exactly how many animals we took to them through the month. In the month of May, our intakes numbers were not high, they were actually lower than they had been in previous months. Additionally, in the, every other month of the last contract, our numbers were right around the 50 to 60 intakes per month, so the justification for raising the rates wasn't there. Additionally, there was no mention of late fees, so the idea that we should pay late fees when they don't even exist in the contract was egregious to us. So in speaking with the city manager and the city attorney, we felt no justification for these fees. Yeah, so that was, that was our reasoning behind what we felt was a violation of the contract.
Okay, because my whole issue with this whole situation was that we got a contract in September, but we were never notified that those fees were being charged on the old contract. So my issue was that this went on for that long, and then we were at risk of losing services. So then I myself called Brenda from SPCA, and she told me that we were not paying any of the dues at all, or the fees at all. And then when they asked, then they were being paid extremely late. So she explained to me that they're a nonprofit, and so they at least wanted to get the original amount, but that wasn't even being given to them. And when I checked the invoices, it looks like we weren't paying them in a timely manner, even the original amount. So that was my issue with that whole situation, then we risked losing it. So I think this really should've came up back in September.
Correct. So during that time, we were still debating what we were gonna do. We were looking to leave them at that point when we realized these fees had gone up so high. We were already negotiating with LA County, and for a brief period, it looked like we were gonna go with LA County. And in the final evaluation, LA County said they couldn't take any more people on, so they weren't gonna take us. So at that time, we were back to square one, and we decided we better pay these fees. There was a time when we were debating whether we were going to take this further, and I don't really want to stay in a public forum what our intentions still are, but yeah, for this entire period of the final four months of this contract, we felt we were, we had a contract signed, there was no justification for raising our fees, and there was certainly no justification for raising it 40%. Intakes had only gone up possibly 2% or 3%. And in some cases, I even said, there's months when we go under 50, and we're not getting rebates, so why would you suddenly raise our rates or raise our intakes when we go over? So, and that contract had no number of intakes, there was no maximum minimum how many animals we could take to them. So we just kept a record, as did they, but there was no mention ever that if we went higher than a certain amount, they would charge us more. So it was shocking, and in fact, as I said, the numbers weren't over. Their numbers did not match our numbers either, because our numbers, like I said, whenever we take an animal, we take an intake slip, so we know exactly how many times we've gone to the facility. Now, residents are able to go in on their own, however, the idea that 40 residents went in, it just sound, that number didn't sound accurate to us, because typically, so they said they had months when they had 90, and those numbers don't seem, I can't believe that 40 times people took dead animals to SPCA on their own. That just doesn't seem correct, and then when asked for evidence of that, they didn't really have any. So, so the entire time, it was very shaky with SPCA, and even now, it's still sort of, it's sort of a delicate relationship we have right now. And I recognize that they, we do have a longstanding relationship with them, but in honor of that, I feel like they should be more willing to negotiate with us, and there was no negotiation with Brenda. They were just giving us different ways to pay the same amount.
Yeah, I don't dispute trying to negotiate. I do think that we have, it's part of our due diligence to question when rates are being increased. My whole issue is that it was given to, it was, the notice went out in May, and we're barely talking about it now, and we almost risked losing services. That's my whole issue. It should've been brought to council in a more timely manner, and so I hope that, you know, hopefully this never does happen again, but that these situations are brought to our attention in a more timely manner. That's what I was trying to convey.
I do appreciate that, Mayor Protim. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, just to add on, I was gonna add on one other thing. Mayor Protim mentioned something. The staff was a little late in getting the fees over. I actually met with SPCA. They were very unhappy. They were not happy the fees hadn't been paid, even the basic. So I talked to Mr. Reyes, there was some miscommunication from staff, and Mayor Protim is correct. So we made sure the base fees were paid as well as the overage. Thankfully, they dropped the extra fees of roughly around $7,000. They didn't charge us for being late, but they were adamant about making sure we paid the overages. They said that because of, I think, what's been mentioned earlier, a lot of the adoptions, and then the abandonment of animals, it's increased their costs substantially, and they felt like they needed to cover their costs, and they couldn't just let cities free ride our jurisdictions. At the very end of the negotiation with them, they asked us to pay the fees, or they would just continue services, so we had no choice other than to pay the fees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kearney?
I have to piggyback on Mayor Protim. In the new contract, there's a paragraph, she said, a line in there about raising the fees whenever they feel damn good and ready to. Did we negotiate to get that out of there? Or is it still, did we do our diligence on the new contract? What we just signed on the dotted line?
No, no, there were several points in there that I argued against entirely, including a 10% late fee. 10% of a monthly cost is roughly $1,300 a month if we're late. I argued what should be like $100, $200, just a slap on the wrist. It shouldn't be basically 10% of our monthly charges just for being a day or two late, especially if they're not getting the invoices until the first week of the month. So that, they weren't willing to negotiate on that. They did put a rider in about a $5,000 penalty that they can implement if they see fit. I didn't agree with that, but again, we had no alternative, and we were in danger of losing the contract. So for this and other reasons, and just for the costs, is or part of the reasons, we're looking for other options, but, but there really was no negotiation from them. It was just, this is what they outlined, and we gave it to the city attorney, and they, they were unwilling to budge on any of the things they said.
Then I have to agree with Mayor Protim, we can start looking for somebody else. Because, you know, we're not gonna pay all these late fees and overages, so that's all, Robert.
Okay. Ms. Quay.
Mike, you mentioned that our residents could go in and drop off their unwanted pets. Why is the city paying for that? Shouldn't the resident pay for that?
Well, again, this is not something that was ever in the old contract. There was no, the old contract had no limitations. If we took them 50 animals or took them 300 animals, the cost was the same. So it didn't matter if residents were taking animals, and truthfully, I don't believe that residents are taking them to the extent they say they are. We questioned them on that, and we're like, well, there's, do you have records of this? Is there some kind of information we could see to verify that they were in fact our residents? There are, there is a, just El Camino Village does have Landale addresses and things like that, but so we gave them that information, said, hey, if you took anybody south of, or excuse me, east of Prairie, that's a good chance that's not a Landale taxpayer. So we corrected that, and so there might have been a few that were, that they were taken in, that they're allowing to take and shouldn't have. We do know that people call us with, to pick up animals, and then we verify the address, they were like, well, that's not Landale. You have to, that goes to the county. And then those people would then go to SPCA, and SPCA is not checking, or if they're not checking, they'll take the animal and it'll be charged against us. But again, in the last contract, there was no limit on how many animals we could take, so it didn't matter that that was happening. It was only in this new contract that they've included that, and in the final four months of the outgoing contract. So they were, they were charging us, they're wanting to charge us for all these things, which I was not in favor of paying, but again, we were in such a bind, because there are only three entities that actually do this service in the South Bay, that we really don't have another option, and the ones we reached out to weren't able to take us on.
And why wouldn't the resident be the one paying for it? I mean, I'm turning in my pet. I should be the one paying, not the city.
Oh, excuse me, no, so if someone turns in their own pet, there is a surrender fee. So the resident does pay, there's a $150 surrender fee. But if a resident just brings in a stray that they found and is like, hey, I saw this stray walking in.
But I could say that about my pet. I found him on the street, here you go.
Yeah, and that's, that's our argument too, is like, well, anybody could just say that pet they don't want anymore.
Anybody could say it's, I found it on the street.
Yeah. In fact, they could say they found, they could've found it at any other city and just unloaded it at SPCA, because they just wanna get rid of it. So this is another challenge we had, you know, we want your staff, if you're gonna be billing us for this now, and we want some kind of verification these intakes are in fact from, either it was found in Landale or from a Landale resident, because any neighboring city could take their pet in, say they found it on Hawthorne or 147th, and then we'd be both for it.
Are they requesting identification or anything like that?
So that's, they are now, but at the time, they weren't.
But they are now.
Yes, that was one of our contingencies with the contract, was they have to verify, and they have to get some information where the animal was found, so that we can in fact prove that it was a Landale taxpayer, and it's the service we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Juarez.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of Councilmember Kearney's comments about looking for another company or what have you, there is a, just for point of clarification, there, I believe there's a 30-day notification period, where if you notify the other party, you can cancel the contract. So if another entity were to have availability to take us on in the amount penciled, then we would be able to give a 30-day notice.
Correct. Correct.
What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Making motion to go with staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Unwillingly, but yes.
Motion been made by Kearney unwillingly to go with the staff recommendation, and seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on, Juarez? Because I was looking that way, sorry about that. Any, any discussion on said motion? CNN with the council, please vote. Sitting over the council. Please vote. Madam City Clerk.
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay. Now let's hear from the city manager. The city manager's report.
No names tonight, mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, items from council members. Item 12, contractor transparency. Let's head up staff report. Should I, yeah, go ahead with staff. Who's going to take this report?
In fiscal year 2023, 2023 through 2024, the city's building and safety department issued 11, about 1,100 permits in a 12-month period, averaging about 94 permits per month. When you, when a resident enters into a contract with a contractor for home improvements, they, if it's over like $500, you have to have a general contractor's license or so. So they put that, their information on a form, and then staff, our current procedures, we review it to make sure that there isn't any outstanding disciplinary history within the last five years, and to make sure that the permits that they're pulling is active and they're able to pull these permits. So the mayor has requested staff to review our building and safety policies to add additional transparency. So now, with staff's or council's approval, there's going to be a new question in the application. It's basically going to ask, do you have any pending or final determination from the California State Licensing Board resulting in any violation in the last five years? If they say yes, then we tell them to go back to the property owner and have the property owner sign the building permit application, acknowledging that they're aware of their contractors having violations. So it is an added transparency. So just so that everyone knows, the CSLB does maintain a database. So if you put in a general contractor's name, their license number, their history will pop up. So that's part of our current procedures. But now that if a resident's applied for a business license, they can be assured that we're looking at it, and if they do have a violation that pops up, they're going to sign acknowledging the disciplinary history. So with staff asked the council's direction if we can update our building and safety permits, this would be applicable to building permits, electrical, sewer, plumbing, grading, and et cetera. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay, let's hear from Ms. Quivers.
Where would you put it on our form? Our form is so busy as it is. Where would it go on the form?
I believe I attach a sample into the agenda link. So there should be a sample, and it's the last bracket at the end.
Okay, got it.
And just for the benefit of the public, it just simply reads, it's pretty simple. Say the city transparency policies for contractors. Do you have any pending or final determination from CSLB violation resulting in discipline for the past five years? And I ask you for your case number and the reason, and the property owner's signature. Let's hear from Suarez.
So the question, do you have any pending or final determination? Does that mean if they're being, they're in the process of having allegations made against them, they would have to put that they're under investigation? What does that mean exactly?
You're correct. So right now, the database does show any pending violation. So if they don't have a active business license, it's going to show it. If they had any type of disciplinary problem, whether accused or final, it's going to show up. So they're basically acknowledging to the department that they may have a potential violation.
Can I do a point of clarification? So just to clarify allegations, it's not simply if someone says that the contractor did something improperly. They would have had to file with the Contractor State Licensing Board. The state, Contract State Licensing Board has actively said, okay, this is enough information for us to do an investigation. Right? Because anyone can make allegations, right? And that's not the intent of this. If the Contractor Licensing Board has received it, and they made the first determination, this is enough to look into it, then that would be a pending. Because someone has determined, yeah, this is enough to look into. Now, what's the determination? Who knows what that determination would be after they fully investigated or what have you? Once that's investigated, that final determination would then, then it would be a final determination, obviously after they finished investigating, determined whether or not such allegations or claims are valid or what have you. I wouldn't want it to be a final determination if the final determination was, didn't hold true. But let's say if the final determination held true to whatever degree, then, then yes, that needs to be closed, a final determination. So I don't know if that needs to be clear, that you don't have to disclose it if it was a final determination, but the final determination yield no actions or anything from the state licensing board? Because there's a mute point if they, if someone filed, and they say, yeah, this is enough to look into. And they look into it, and they say, oh, well, on his face, it looked like there was enough to look into. But we looked into it, and we determined, there's nothing here. And that's a mute point then. So but if you just put, if you just read it as it is, right, just with the plain construction of it, then you would have to say yes. If there was a final determination, a final determination yield, there's nothing to see here. Right? And that's not really the intent. The intent is, yes, there was something to see here. Right? So I don't know if we need to reword that just slightly or what have you. But I just want to clarify allegations, because it's not simply someone just saying, hey, this person did something wrong. Because trust me, when you're a contractor, sometimes some people are going to think you did wrong, and perhaps the contractor didn't do anything improper, and sometimes maybe they did. So if we can clarify that maybe a little bit, or just get your thoughts on that.
So, correct. So I have been a active participant, not directly, but overseeing something during my time. There was a contractor who was accused of misconduct. And so I had the responsibility of reviewing it. So if you're accused of misconduct, they bring up, let's say, charge one, charge two, charge three. And all these charges are investigated by the state. The state, if they find it credible, they will take you to a hearing. And if you decide that you're going to fight it, it's public record. But if you decide, okay, then I will resolve it, and whatever issues you have with the property owner, they may not bring up that record against you. So I do know that, you know, it's, if both parties don't agree to basically, like, kind of arbitration, to basically resolve the deal themselves, then it goes to the CSLB for a hearing. So that's what you're actually seeing in the record, that there's actually a complaint that's substantial enough where it needs to go to a hearing. So that's the records that we see on the CSLB.
So, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like if the council is in favor of the form, including this new transparency policy, but you do want us to make some final tweaks to that language, you could give us that direction tonight. And we could, we could change that language to be a little bit more of what you're saying.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Suarez.
It says also, common violations are work without a permit. So if a contractor doesn't pull like a minor permit, and it gets reported, that will go on their record?
Go ahead.
I guess you can say they can file a request for investigation to the state, and the state, through their procedures, will determine is this, how serious this violation is. So I'm not sure how the state classifies their violation, but essentially, yes, you can.
This is a permit from the state required permit, not a city, a city permit, right?
So Mayor Protem, I completely unrelated to Lawndale, but one of my other clients, I had reason to look at a pending matter last week. And to be filed, it had two departures from plans, a failure to pay a supplier resulting in the property owner having to make that payment. It did have work done without a contract, but that appeared to be stuff that was added to the major violations. So it would be, it seems unlikely that someone would get, it would go through the investigation process, and the investigator would file it with a hearing officer, unless the work without permit was something that a contractor was repeating, or it was a major permit for a major job. I don't think that a residential contractor is going to get a proceeding and a one-off on that, at least based on my reading last week.
Mayor, Council, we can also update the language, and based on the comments we've received, if that's the desire of the council.
I would like to see an updated language, and then maybe bring it back at our next meeting for approval.
Okay, sounds good. We can do that. Staff can work on that.
And then I'm perfectly fine with that, just so that we were clear on, the staff is clear on what we're looking for on the updated language. It's so that it clarifies a final determination. I'm not going to wordsmith it. Final determination, if that determination was determined to be in violation of the State Contractor Licensing Board or whatever. I'm just going to use the word positive. If determination determined to be positive, then we don't necessarily need to know that.
We'll take care of that, Mayor, Council, and bring it back at the next meeting. We'll re-adjendize it. We'll have it with the updated language.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do such. That'll be the order. Thank you for that. Thank you for that work on that item. Okay. Next item on the agenda. I lost my page. Okay, here it is. Okay, number 13, Mayor and City Council, Mayor and City Council members' report of attendance at meeting. Or anything you want to talk about. That's from Councilwoman Quivers.
All right. I would like to thank staff and the Lawndale School District students that put together the beautiful Field of Honors. I came twice. I came during the day, and it was beautiful. But at night, it even made it pop more. Staff did great, putting those lights, big lights in each corner. Thank you for doing that. I attended Senator Bradford's Legacy Celebration on November 8. And then on November 14, I attended the South Bay Workforce Investment Board 29th Annual Award Ceremony. One of our LuSinger, LuSinger, LuSinger High School recipient was Maria Salazar Rivera, who is a Lawndale resident. And she received the Outstanding Alumni Award for Successfully Completing an Arrow Flags Pre-Aprentership. She is going to be studying, or she has a degree in mechanical engineering, and it will continue to get her master shortly. So congratulations to Maria. And I have two things for Sean. If I, I've been asked by several residents for an update on the empty lot on Hawthorne and Manhattan. It's been empty now for over 20 years, I think. And they want to see something there. If you could, we could get an update on what's going on there. And also, there's a lot of people that want to go to the old Leo Restaurant. And we are all wondering what's the status on that? If you know anything about when there will be opening, or if there's something we could do to help them open?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I can answer that real quick. Yeah, they went through another plan check. Roy's sitting down with them, and Peter are going to work with the applicant. He's having a challenge getting the plans over to staff, so they're not without, without having corrections back. So I asked Roy, our LA County, he's been with us for many years, at least 20, to sit down with this applicant and go over with what he needs and walk him through. Because he submitted plans again, and they're deficient, and they don't, they were submitted two weeks ago, and they just don't meet the code. We can't approve them because of Title 24. They did work without permits. They took things out, and that kicked in Title 24. That's an old building. It wasn't consistent with Title 24, today's standards. And when you take out and remove equipment, it kicks in the new requirement. So the reports they submitted are not meeting as of last Tuesday, someone asked me. And I checked with Plan Checker, our building, LA County building. And again, the plans were rejected. They're not meeting. But however, Peter and Roy are going to meet with the applicant, sit down with them, and walk them through what's needed.
Thank you.
That's where we're at. And then on the corner, I can answer that. The corner property does have approved hotel site. They just not have, not submitted for entitlement. That's where we're at right now.
Do we know how much longer it's going to be empty?
I've asked Mr. Awad and his partners when they plan on submitting, and they said, within the next couple of months. That's all. I've heard that several times, but no indication they plan on submitting. We did give them a lengthy conditional approval letter for the site plan, so they have to meet all the requirements, particularly parking.
And is there anything on, or whatever we gave them, that says you have to bill within a certain amount of time? Because it could go another 10 years if they decide not to bill, and it will have a empty lot?
No, we don't. The, it's not entitled. If the council wanted to do some kind of agreement, they do have to come before the council for some changes in the zone requests. That's something that we could look at and do in a public benefit. They have the performance agreement. We can have them put that in. As of right now, they just have staff-level approval, which still needs planning commission and council approval for finalization. But that's definitely something we could look at. It's like a development schedule. We call like a development agreement, where they have to meet certain standards and requirements. That's something we could look at if the council wants to, down the road.
Thank you.
I also attended the Field of Honor, and I did it also during the day and at night, because again, I enjoy the nighttime version and seeing those flags against the dark sky. Thank you to staff for, and to the students who, and Mr. Kearney for doing what they had to do to get that for our community. And I also attended the South Bay Web event, the 29th Annual. And congratulations to our student Maria from Losing Our High School. We were pretty proud of her, seeing her walk across that stage, and she spoke well, too. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I also attended Senator Bradford's Legacy Celebration Dinner on the 8th. I also attended the Field of Honor twice. I also attended the South Bay Web Awards Dinner with a one-year-old lady, Maria. And when she came up to get her award, or, okay. I think we had the loudest table in there for a Lawndale student from that school over there. And I also attended the El Camino College Night Out, which is well received. I also attended the Library Trust and Oversight Commission meeting on the 13th. And I run, everybody, I think it's still going on. Look, you can tell me if I'm wrong. You could come and buy, get furniture, office furniture, and make a donation. I believe it's still going on. My boss got a five-door file cabinet that I had to pick up, made a donation. And also, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Marissa Suarez.
Yeah, my favorite time to visit the Field of Honor is always at night. And I don't know when we started involving the students, but I think that's a great idea. I think it's a great learning experience. So thank you for that. And then I had a South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee meeting. I can't quite remember actually what we discussed, but we do have a board meeting this Thursday. So the Steering Committee always sets the agenda for the Board of Directors meeting. And then I did have a question that I had asked a couple meetings ago regarding the security service, the patrols, security patrols taking photos of residential houses. And I don't, I didn't get a response from that on why they're taking. And I don't, I didn't get a response from that on why they're taking photos and it wasn't graffiti related.
Okay, so, so Southwest Patrol does provide me with daily reports of, of every shift, what they're doing. And part of the reasons we have them taking photos is so that we know they went where they're supposed to go. So the photos that they get daily are at the parks showing that they were at, doing the patrols of the parks as they're supposed to, at all of our city buildings as they're supposed to. And they do take graffiti photos. So I'm not sure, I know we talked briefly about it, I can get some more information on when that was or why that picture was taken. I don't know, it could have been a vendor there, I mean, necessarily be taking a picture of a house. But if you want to give me some more information, I could look further into it. But they do take pictures throughout their day to show that they're at the places we want them to go to.
Okay, because this was a residential street and from what I understand, it was several residential houses, not graffiti related. So I wasn't sure if we have them doing other services besides what they were contracted to do, that was my question. But I'll get more information.
Okay, and specifically, so we do have three different guards. So if, if it was day or night and if we know what day of the week it was.
It was a Sunday, I believe, afternoon.
Okay, yeah, and so that would, that would make a, then I could just ask that particular guard what he was taking pictures of.
Okay, I also attended the Fields of Honors and I guess this is the first year that the students were involved?
No.
This is my first time hearing about the students.
They started putting the flags up and he is 13, five years ago.
So they've been doing it all along?
Five years.
That's my first time hearing that they were involved, okay. Very good, and that is a good idea.
This year Rogers Middle School helped him out this year.
Excellent idea. And I just have one question concerning Senator Stephen Bradford. Of course, we have a, a new senator coming on board, I believe in December. Did we have a, any type of recognition for Mr. Bradford, Senator Bradford?
I don't think so, Mayor, council. We can-
Yeah, we-
Put something up and put something on the next meeting?
Definitely customary that we present him with, you know, a plaque or, or something for his services as our, our senior for the past, what, 12 years?
Okay, we'll take care of that, we'll have it on the next agenda.
Okay, very good. With that, that's all I have. Okay. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, in these here chambers, is now 8:18. Yeah, in ballpark, give or take. At least we don't have a closed session, so.